As much as I hate to interrupt the jolly good time that we are having, it is six o'clock, so I'm gonna hit this on the table and call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which stands one nation, our God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Ready. Roll call. I noticed we're a couple late tonight. Ms. Foraker.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
Ms. Fordice.
Present.
Mr. Campbell and Ms. Edler are absent. You need an agenda, Mike? I got them right there if you need them or want them. Uh, speaking of agendas, number four, on to the approval of the agenda.
How does it feel to close the agenda first?
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. On to number five, citizen hearing and other communications. Uh, third time's a charm, I suppose, but Pope punish sheriff is unfortunately not here, but they sure they got other stuff going on. Uh, council, as always, you know what I'm gonna say, as long as you're okay with that, we'll stop and take a report from them if they show up. Uh, on to letter B, Scott Dre, our fire chief, also not able to attend this evening, but while I was unpacking the box, I did see that he had left a note and some words of wisdom, so Katie.
Yep, I will read his report here, so, uh, Scott said, "My work schedule has me in Raska conducting training for a couple days. The fire department responded to 14 calls for service in the last month. One fire, two rescue, and 11 EMS. Several members of the fire department were present last weekend to make pancakes for the North Pole football team on their last Saturday morning practice before school starts. Elkhart Fire Department will also be providing EMS service for all home varsity football games. Two of our members have began taking class to become certified firefighters, and we're hoping to get two more people into an EMT class in the near future."
Awesome. Council, any follow-up questions for Mr., uh, his report? No? No? Okay. Not that he's here to answer them, but we can, uh, yeah. Yes. Mike, anything to add, or no? Fair enough. Uh, on to letter C, any public comments or anything not on the agenda?
I have a question, sir. Ron Adams here. Uh, we are mowing the ground down here for the citizens on East Walnut, but we don't mow it or North Grant or anyplace else. Uh, our city workers are, two of them on the mower are over eighty dollars an hour. Uh, I would think time could be used something a little different. If you go to the other cities, which we're trying to model ourselves off of, they do not mow public people's personal ground, residential ground. We're on Delaware and that, they don't mow back out.
Where specifically is this happening? Cause I know this question's been brought up before.
West side of Walnut, east of town, crossing the cemetery, all the way through there. Casey mows theirs, city doesn't mow that. Uh, he's mowing North Grant, got two properties there where they dug the ditches out. They can't get down in there and mow, they don't mow because it belongs to the city. They don't mow for Kimberly out there. I just wondered how come they're mowing that and they don't mow the rest of it?
Okay. Uh, we can definitely look into that and get a better answer to follow up with you on that one, cause I know Mr. Hesse brought up a similar concern in recent past.
I was just curious, because it looks kinda like partial allowed they'd be. I mean, the rest of people pay taxes too, and they don't mow for them, so.
Well, I can assure you that's.
They don't mow his front yard, he mows right out next to the road.
Sure. No, I can assure you that's not the case, but now we can look into that and get a follow-up with you, so.
Just a little, one question, uh, William Alter here. Um, uh, the drainage still is kinda, it was just as little as it rained like this morning, although it was fairly hard for a short period of time. It just filled that ditch north of, just by north half. You know, I'm not sure we can do anything about it, but it's really backing up from north farther. So I think you need to break it up down there, and then we'd get a good flow, at least for a while till you could. Somebody needs to take a look at that, cause it's really getting bad. You know, we haven't had to worry about it, we've been in such a drought for years, but now all of a sudden, it really is bad.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. Anything else?
Tony Hesse. Um, I'm taking the dog out for a walk. I usually take a lot of the alleys here on the west side of town. Um, city did stop mowing that, um, right away next to the farm field, and it hasn't been mowed since then, so I don't know if the authorities will know if I'm about that or not. But in the middle of the alleyway, south of my house, which is west of Washington, the grass has grown up about that, or it drags to the bottom, the buffalo alley, towards the car. Um, I noticed the alleyway north of Main Street behind your house, Angie, that grass is getting pretty thick. Um, the alleyway south of Maple, um, about the middle third of it, there's grass. I don't know if they put down any grass killer, and you and I talked about put grass killer, that hasn't been very effective this year, but that grass seems to be much thicker than usual, so.
Yeah, and I know the guys are having a heck of a time keeping up with mowing in general just because of all the rain we have, so. So, no, I mowed mine a week ago, and it already needs some fierce again, so.
Finding a dry dang to mow.
Yeah, and then that's, that's been a tough challenge too, so. Not an excuse, but it's, it's, it's the reason, part of the reason behind it, I'm sure.
So, that's one thing.
That, no, un, un, understand, understand. No, thank you. Anything else? Let's consider the public comment section closed then. Uh, on to letter six, uh, or excuse me, number six. Uh, public hearings for the consideration of an amendment to the natural gas and electric franchise ordinance to add a 2% franchise fee. Uh, can I get a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
I move to open the public hearing.
Second, Fordice. Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Public hearing is now open. Uh, Deb or Katie, did we receive any written or calls or comments, anything for or against?
Did not receive any comments, and it was published, and I'm like, start obviously.
Anybody in attendance that has any comments for or against before we turn it over to staff? Yes.
Is there a cap on how high that franchise fee can go?
So for cities in Iowa, it's 5%. Um, that's the cap. There is, I believe, an amendment for larger cities to go up to seven. I don't believe we're, I don't believe we're eligible for that, we are at five.
Cause I noticed Des Moines having voted seven and a half.
Oh, seven and a half?
Yeah, yeah, truly. Hang on, hang on a second. And then this move will lock in for five years?
Not necessarily. No, I believe in the agreement, they, they propose to not make a change for at least 24 months.
Twenty-four months.
That sounds right, yes.
I'm looking at it.
Yep.
So, okay, 24 months, so.
Yes.
But our cap's at five?
Yes, for our size.
Okay, cause like I said, I, that was on the news this morning, I was passively listened to that.
I'm not sort of 7.5.
Twenty, twenty-one, so just give that.
Yes.
Seven, one, one, one dot one three.
Okay, and then will this be effective at the start of fiscal year or calendar year for just the best possible?
So, um, in the new ordinance, it says, or we anticipate it starting within 90 days or around that time for implementation. So it's not like it starts at a new fiscal year. It's, you know, when we get the paperwork all documented and everything, then they propose it'll be around 90 days, I read.
They being Minnamer?
Yes, or consumer center.
I know it's been talked about before, but what's this franchise fee going towards again?
So, I can read. So we passed a resolution, um, outlining the following purposes for the funds to be used for. Um, public safety, including the equipment for fire, police, emergency services, sanitation, street and civil defense departments, um, the establishment, construction, reconstruction, repair, equipping, remodeling, and extensions of public works, public utilities, and public transportation systems, the construction, reconstruction, or repair of streets, highways, bridges, sidewalks, pedestrian underpasses and overpasses, street lighting fixtures and public grounds, and the acquisition of real estate needed for such purposes, the repair, remediation, restoration, cleanup, replacement, and improvement of existing public improvements and other publicly owned property, buildings and facilities, and then projects designed to prevent or mitigate future disasters, and the last one is economic development activities and projects. So I believe there is either six or seven purposes outlined.
And it takes the place of the 1% local option sales tax, it's already included on every single utility bill. So instead of paying into the 1% of loss, you would then be paying 2%, but it would be directly towards the franchise fee, direct back to the city.
So in lieu of the 1% is.
That goes away.
So it's not on top of 1%.
That's probably.
So it replaces, it replaces, it's only a 1%.
Excuse me, excuse me, can we, can we not have multiple side conversations going on so everybody can be paying attention to what's going on, so we can all know what's going on? Please, I understand that, but not, not during this meeting, thank you. Go ahead, continue.
Not, not, that was my only question. Yeah, it replaces the 1% with the 2%, so it is a 1% increase. It, instead of going to loss, local option sales tax and being broken apart, it is just directly paid back to the city in this case.
From Minnamer.
From Minnamer through the franchise fee.
To your meeting, he's got a question.
Yes, yes, sir. Will you alter? I'm fine if we go in turn, but not multiple at once, so.
Oh, yeah, I understand, like you said.
Thank you, sir.
No, no. Um, okay, it's not implemented for three months, but do we expect our first, uh, when you do it, for all three months?
Um, no, I mean, it's.
See, you understand that.
There's no back catch-up.
Okay, that's what I was asking, yeah. In other words, we've, we started it, let's say, August 1st, but they don't implement till December 1st, would we owe those other months or not?
No. You just, you, you've already paid in the 1%, those three months, that's why.
Okay.
So that'd be impossible to recoup that and then reduce.
Well, I wouldn't, yeah, I, what I was looking at more at, if it is gonna happen that way, okay, I know it, big deal. It's only, it's not gonna be a arm breaker on it, it's just.
No, solid.
Prepare, let people prepare for it, let, you know, just sit down and know, since that's not the case.
Yeah, it's a great question, it's, yep, it won't be that way.
And as we progress in getting it set up, I'll make sure to inform council, and we'll try and get some information pushed out there, so.
Good to share.
Will Minnamer include these type of, uh, updates, other building notifications or communication on the area?
I doubt it, I think that's up to the, like, the cities to communicate that.
Anybody else have any comments or questions or concerns or anything on the franchise fees? I'll wrap this up, and then I'll go over to Lieutenant here briefly.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Edler. Excuse me, Schaefer. It's force I have it. Foraker, he said hi, Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Edler and Campbell are absent, there we go. Public hearing is now closed, so that takes us to, uh, let's go ahead and knock out, finish up your six here, letter A, uh, the first reading of ordinance number 2025-6, and ordinance amending the Elkhart Code of Ordinances, chapters 110 and 111, to provide for a 2% natural gas and electric franchise fee. We have the option normally to waive the second and third readings, but since we do not have all members in attendance, we cannot do that, so we would just be reading, having the first reading this evening. Here. I think it does volunteer to either yay or nay, or whatever you guys.
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-6.
Say.
Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. Council, with your blessing, I'd like to pause and go over to Lieutenant if he's got any words of wisdom for us.
Hey, sorry about being late on that.
No, you're fine. It's not like you got other stuff to do.
Yeah. That's on the interstate. Uh, so this is way that July, calls for July, 56 calls for service. Uh, two of those during that time were DQ firework related. I'm not, I didn't check the dates to see if that's wrong, July or anything, sorry about that. For the whole month, only two, that's, I'm pretty happy with that. Other than that, nothing, jumps out. No. No calls.
We had a brief discussion before the meeting about the number of, uh, well, there's been one major accident, but the number of post-calls that are happening, the traffic coming off North Town, you know already what I'm saying, either coming over the bridge or going back. Is there gonna be any stepped-up enforcement over there?
Yeah, this calls and service allow us to, you know, be up here, you know, wide open area.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
It's, we're, we're wanting that 210 bridge back open.
Yeah, yeah.
As soon as possible, yeah. I'm sure you guys are too.
Going back up.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely be a lot more, uh, goals up through here.
That's funny, that's good. We appreciate that, thank you.
Excellent.
There's been, uh, some preliminary discussions as well on, uh, lowering the speed limits, and we just got some of the preliminary stuff back, it's a little early to get into it all, but if, if that change happens, when that change happens, we'll communicate that with you, and maybe we'll do extra enforcement.
Yes.
Or some increased awareness around that, if that's possible. It's not by the, the gas, right?
Along 126 coming in, but it's sanitary, it's 45, I want you to go with that.
Okay. So, 30 or 35, depending on where, where they, where they advise us. Right now, just out there, is what they've recommended because of traffic counts on the east side.
Doing both directions.
Yeah, 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 both directions, sorry, I thought you meant out here as well, right now.
No, this is, I think this is.
Yeah, but yes, from both directions, Cleveland Town would be, it'd be 30 or 35 all the way out past the cemetery, other passes, but we'll, we'll be in touch.
Any east or coming in?
Both, both.
Okay. Cause current, currently it changes to, as you're heading east, it changes to 45 once you cross over 46. It goes, it goes 45, want that whole stretch through there, from 46th and 126th, all the way east through, through town, city limits, if you will. Make that, uh, I would, I would prefer it continue 30 all the way through, but, so, somewhere in there.
Food for thought. There's a big point of contention over, and all of them, but the speed limit being 25. They've done these traffic studies and had that front come in and do that. They're actually looking at raising five miles an hour to do a gradual decrease instead of going from 55 to 25, right there, so it's a kind of a gradual, you know, guess, well, force whatever you have, but.
Yeah, I, I would, and I would agree with that.
That's one of the things they're looking at, is increasing it at five miles an hour to have that gradual decrease, so it's not just a sudden.
Yeah, it, because it does that coming in from the east here, and it, somewhat does that now, because it's, it's, it goes 45 through, coming up through the bottoms, then it changes to 55 for just a pinch, like a half mile, then it drops back to 45, then once you hit 40, 46, it goes down to 30 from there, so gradual-ish. But I would agree, as far as out there, so I say we retain the 30, the 45, maybe push it out slightly if we can, and then bring it to 30, I agree with that, 100%.
In my mind, no way can remember what it is.
Sure. Absolutely.
We find to have signage.
Yes. There'll be about yay-bay.
Right. It's part of the, part of the communication of that will be, we're, we're looking into the cost of some lighted signs as well that your speed is, I think you called it to set the high school signs or whatever, that one point a couple years ago, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel, any other questions, comments for Lieutenant? Thank you as always, so you're welcome to hangouts, doodle, whatever you gotta do.
All right.
Oh, thank you. All right, back on track then, uh, on to number seven, the consent agenda. Uh, the one thing I wanted to point out here would be letter H. Um, resolution doesn't any beggars night in the city of Elkhart, Iowa, I believe we did that last year.
We did that last year.
Yeah, we did. I believe this will just be a continuing, like, making it official for this year, but it'll be the last Saturday of October.
Yes.
Do you think we discussed it, that we don't need it made official?
Yeah. This is like to continue forever, so that we don't have to do again. I was not at the September meeting last year, but this is just putting it in place so that it doesn't have to be revisited.
Okay. That was the only thing I wanted to point out. Counsel, did you have any questions or comments on anything, or we want to, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. On to number eight then, business items, uh, first letter A, uh, for 251, 255 Northwest Elm Street, uh, the boundary survey reimbursement request. And you all saw, we had a separate email with some information on that, if you all have the chance to review that. On to discussion. Anybody have anything they want to bring up or mention on it first? Thoughts on it?
Say, I can understand that there was a misunderstanding, but instead of asking for clarification, they took a step that wasn't necessary.
Okay. Ms. Schaefer, any comments, thoughts?
I, the whole thing confuses me just a little bit, uh, only because a couple years ago, probably more than a couple, um, I was in the same situation. We've got a bunch of trees right here on, on Main Street, and there were a bunch that were clearly dead and dying, and you had to come down, and every time a storm came through, drop a whole bunch of limbs. And I'm sure it was Ron that I talked to one day when he was at the water treatment plant doing something, and I was just like, hey, pretty sure these are in the easement, is that something I'm supposed to do something about? Is that something you guys do something about? And he had me talk to Chad at the time, and it was just like, not a problem. Like, the, the code says, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but city property is, what, 40 feet from the center of the street?
Depends on what street.
Yeah.
What the right of way is.
Uh, and so, like, there was no issue, like, nobody asked me for anything additional at that point in time, but I also approached it from, like, that, having done that homework already, and it was like, you know, let me know if I'm wrong, cause of course I'm excessively polite when I'm asking for things, and so I was like, let me know if I'm wrong, but I think I'm not wrong, and I just don't want these trees to fall on somebody's car or something, and, uh, and then they took care of them. And so I, yeah, to your point, I guess, I just wish there would have been some more communication from the property owner when he encountered this barrier. Uh, most of us know, I think, that an expense of that size would be something we would have to approve anyway. Uh, and he certainly could have come and, and talked to us then, and I think this all could have been alleviated, uh, as I'm frustrated that he didn't reach out to them, cause sure as heck, had Chad or anybody told me, hey, I need you to drop some money on this survey, I'm like, I don't, I don't have any money for you. Um, and I would have definitely talked to somebody else, and so I'm just, I'm disappointed on his behalf that he didn't reach out to somebody else to try to get a different answer or clarification, or coming to a meeting and saying, hey, you guys want me to drop all this money? And we'd have been like, whoa, wait a minute, that's not what we're asking you to do. Uh, so I, I feel stuck, and then I, yeah, to your point, like, I respect what he's asking for, and I think he brought up a code that we needed to finalize a little bit better and come up with a tree survey, you know, system and all of these things. But it could have been avoided had there just been more communication.
I think that's, I think that's well said in a lot of ways. I, I would add that the things that we've been focused on cleaning up and getting straightened out the last few years, this ordinance would probably fall under that as far as having a proactive plan versus a reactive plan. We've had a lot of reactive things, and this is a great example of what happens, uh, when things are left to interpretation uh, because of a reactive situation, and, um, well, Katie's not authorized to, um, well, isn't authorized to authorize private citizens to spend city money. That's where the confusion came in, cause he was asked to provide some type of proof, um, that the trees were in the, not his responsibility, for lack of better terms. Now, agree with what you said, there could have been probably some communications, permissions granted, things like that, but he was asked to provide proof, he sought it on his own to find a way to provide that proof. He did it in a way that provided an invoice to the city, um, and Katie wasn't allowed, you know, because of the amount, to approve that, so that's why it comes to us to approve. And what we've done since then is we fixed that, we have a proactive plan in place, we've communicated with the arborist, we've communicated with whoever else that was that, and set up the plan for them to commit correctly. Um, so we fixed the issue moving forward, and, you know, I'm, I'm okay with us paying the invoice this time because of the miscommunication. It's my opinion that the miscommunication was, it's on both sides. Um, but moving forward, there will be revisions in there made, that the spending of city money by private citizens to, you get the point, we need to clean that up, and it, it'll be cleaned up in the future, so it won't happen twice. So in this case, I'd be in favor of paying it, uh, because of the miscommunication, but I would like to avoid that from happening again personally. We can disagree on that.
What, we can disagree? I know that. Yeah, I, it's hard, cause again, like, I saw the emails, I get what he was sent and what was asked of him. I'm just shocked that somebody without double-checking with a secondary source or getting guarantee of payment would drop that amount of money on something like this. Uh, but that, that just shocks me. There's no way I would just drop that because anybody, Johnny comes down, like, hey, I need you to do this thing, give me a thousand dollars, but, ah, 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 no. Um, I just, I wish he'd have talked to, to somebody. And that's, everybody knows our emails are out there and everywhere, all of our information is everywhere, we're easy to find. Yes, I just wish he would have communicated.
Yeah. Uh, and I mean, I, I also, I agree with Mr. Fordice, that, uh, I, I know a legal opinion was that, uh, we're not, we have no liability there. Seeing how misunderstanding could happen, I too, if okay, paying it, uh, this one time.
Do you need the motion to pay the invoice? Motion to reimburse Scott Todd, uh, for the boundary survey at 251 and 255 Northwest Elm Street uh, for the amount of $1,525 for tree removal or, uh, for boundary, I'm trying to see the word, boundary survey receipt.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Nay.
Fordice.
Hi.
Cheers. On to letter B, ordinance number 2025-7, amending the code of ordinances, uh, of the city of Elkhart by amending provisions pertaining to cigarette and tobacco permits. So the next several are just, uh, summarizing, getting in line with the state codes and requirements. And it'd be the similar, fortunately, with, um, brain fart, but going back to 6A, we can have, we can have the first readings of them, we just can't fully approve them, even though, like, we have to because they're state laws, but we, it's, it's a thing. So, they'll, they'll get fully officially passed and everything, next go around.
And these are the laws that were enacted by the 2025 state legislature.
Thank you.
That require us to update our codes.
Yes, thank you. So. Motion and a second to, for the, the ordinance.
So are we just reading them then, cause we can't enact them?
We can only do one reading, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we, we would need four council members to waive reading.
Okay.
Motion to approve the first reading.
Yeah.
Yes.
Of ordinance 2025-7, amending the code ordinance for the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to cigarette and tobacco permits.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. My apologies, I was pausing, and I was gonna ask if there was anything we needed to talk about on this, but it's all there in black and white, and it's something I can really chat about unless you guys want to, so. Uh, on to letter C, ordinance number 2025-8, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to public hearing requirements.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance 2025-8.
So, yeah. Foraker.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Did you want to be?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, that was the one that I had the dramatic pause on.
Yeah.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
I know.
Uh, letter D is in bold. Uh, ordinance number 2025-9, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining. by amending provisions pertaining to conflict of interest.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine.
Second.
Forreger?
Hi.
Adler?
Schaefer?
Schaefer?
Hi.
Horace.
Hi.
Adler, Adler is absent. So is Campbell.
I'm in it back here.
I'm right here.
It's Mountain Dew, just for the record.
I saw nothing.
Yes. It has, it happens every time. She's never not been here, and it's, it's a rhythm. I apologize, everybody. Hey, I just had a birthday, too. I'm getting there. I'm sorry, did we, did we have the, we had the?
I gave you the I.
Yes.
And then you needed that one.
Read through, yes, okay, so all I's?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's try it again. Letter E now. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by adding a new section prohibiting false representation of service animals.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Second. Forreger?
Hi.
That works. Schaefer?
Hi.
Horace. Got it that time. Letter F, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to fireworks.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Second.
Forreger?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
Horace.
Hi.
And letter G, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa, by amending provisions pertaining to liquor licenses and wine and beer permits.
Motion to approve first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Second.
Forreger?
Hi.
Schaefer?
Hi.
There's only so many of you guys to go around, so.
I got you.
Apparently I keep adding more, but. All right. On to number nine, discussion items, uh, the comprehensive plan feedback. Uh, as we remember from our special meeting last month, uh, we were talking about, we would take excerpts of the twenty nineteen comp plans slash compare them to what we believe is still relevant or not relevant, and, um, in addition to future public input hearings and then meetings and then feedback, et cetera, et cetera, make sure that we're, our new comp plan is in line with or changed from twenty nineteen, so. Who wants to comment or discuss or start or anything?
I think one of the things would be just on the first page, we're under the vision statement, and I paid the comment, it's a planning session, and it's something I want to suss out when we do the community feedback nights and open houses and the surveys is what exactly is Elkhart's unique identity? It talks about, the twenty nineteen comp plan said, um, maintaining a unique identity, and I have my opinions, but I think it'd be really interesting to get community feedback on what the unique identity of our city is, you know, does it pertain to the festival, does it pertain to the history? If there is, what history? Like, what, what about it is unique? You know, the, the fact that it's named after Elkhart, Indiana, or, you, you get the point. Like, I think we could really hone in on that and see if that's relevant, um, as far as that goes, and I know it's a mission statement, so it sounds really important, but if, or a vision statement, it sounds really important, but if it doesn't mean anything, it's just work soup, you know, it's not really something that's gonna drive the vision of the comp plan, so I thought it'd be interesting during our feedback if, if Snyder could focus on what they, what people think Elkhart's unique identity is, and if maybe we don't have a unique identity, maybe that's the creation of a unique identity, you know? Can't have the world's largest popcorn ball, that's in Sac City, you know, we can do something else, right? Um, we have the world's smallest popcorn ball. To each their own. Uh, and then on the housing goals, um, there was the, or no, it was the land use goals. There's a couple of different things in the land use goals. Uh, I'll just read them really quick, because there's only seven of them, and they're short. Number one was encourage the development of land uses and increase the tax base of the community. You know, we, we just discontinued residential tax abatements, and we talked about the hindrance in the tax space that that's caused, and then we also, as we look at expansion of industrial parks and different opportunities that come to us, that, that does feel like a pretty, pretty healthy goal, number one. We, we do need to continue to do that. Number two, provide for transition and buffering adjacents to intensive developments types and uses. So we talked about if there is new industrial, what types of homes would about that, what types of commercial could about that, you know, how could we set up different areas, so it's not just all housing straight back into the trees all the way up north and around? What other types of developments, parks, things like that, that are needed? I, I believe that one's pretty relevant, if you guys agree. Uh, identify appropriate locations for future facilities and amenities such as parks, public services, city, county, and school district. Obviously, that's an important one. I think it speaks for itself. Uh, encourage the development of housing and employment to establish centers and districts. Um, that one's, I don't think that one's ever really been, uh, I'm looking at you, because you've, you've, Mike, you've been around a couple of years now, had a few years of experience. Creating or establishing centers and districts within the city, is that something that's ever been a priority in the past, or that you think has been considered?
It's never something we've really looked at. I think it's, it's, you know, it's something cities do now, where they create districts where they have retail and residential and such uses kind of combined in, so you'll have, you know, businesses, but you'll have apartments, and you know, it's like the, well, like the district in Ankeny or Kettlestone out in Milwaukee, things like that, which yes, it's a good idea. Is it something that is feasible for us at this time? It's maybe a little more future-looking. I think you'd find those more in communities where you have a larger population and an existing, uh, commercial already, and you're at a point where you want to try something different that expands those out, but in a, you know, more of a trend, you know, development type of situation.
When you can walk from one town to the other in fifteen minutes, it's all a district. If you take fifteen minutes to walk.
I mean, Elkhart time trials, I, I said it's a challenge. I mean, if you really want to condense it down right now, it consists of Kippe's hen house and Jerry's garage, depending on how many people he's got after hours hanging out, so. It's, uh, and, and I, I mean, in a jet, so.
Could I jump to you on that for a second? So, when I was on the council, or, it was when one of the Iowa State groups was doing our comp plan for us. First time I, I remember this local districts thing came up, they had a vision, or they had something in their plan, or one of the drafts, anyway, that when Main Street got developed westward, there would be, it'd be like a second commercial district put there, and I, what I remember the discussion was, at that time, is that really what was already existing was more of, well, the government infrastructure, I mean, the firehouse, city hall, you know, taking up, you know, getting the chocolate there, and then really concentrating on the new development of commercial property of a new section of Main Street as it went west, but there was still some housing, I think, part of that, if I'm saying that self, maybe, you know?
It's possible, it's part of that, I don't really recall, but, you know, it is something that we need to look at, is, you know, our commercial district is really small, and, you know, as we grow, we're gonna need more. Obviously, there's gonna be more demand by people here for something, for more commercial stuff, local, and we've, it's a thing to look at as far as, you know, a combined district or whatever you want to do, or maybe a commercial core with a residential development of some kind around it.
And, and the, so, the relevance of that would be that that needs to maintain and, and continue to be a goal with, with some,
Yeah.
with some, uh, morphology into it. I agree. Um, thank you for the input.
Yeah.
Um, and then I'm, I'm gonna skip ahead a little bit, but it was, uh, encourage the redevelopment and of underutilized properties that benefit from existing infrastructure and transportation improvements. That's just looking at how the city is laid out now, um, that's looking at empty lots in town, that's looking at areas for improvement and considering what, what can be done, what should be done, and then planning, you know, it says existing infrastructure, that, I think that ties in with the flood plants, you know, the, because you were mentioning the drainage and the, right off a grant, that's gonna be addressed in phase two of the comprehensive storm sewer plans, and then the west side of town would be addressed in phase three, so I think that just, it's relevance as a goal as well. Probably important. I'm not, I won't go through all the natural resource ones, um, but I did see the, let's see, it was encourage sustainable practices in locating, designing, constructing, and maintaining development in the community. I don't know what that means necessarily, um, because it's just a lot of words, it sounds like somebody used AI that didn't exist in twenty nineteen. So, maybe, maybe clean, clean that up, or maybe take that one out, or, or try to talk to the community about the importance of, I get the part where it says encourage sustainable practices, period, like, that makes sense, but I don't know, locating, designing, constructing, and maintaining development has to do with, I don't know, we use wood, I guess, it's sustainable.
Well, I feel like, and I could be wrong, but, uh, when I was reading through that, I was remembering that when we were working on this, uh, back when we did it the last time, there was a lot of conversation about flooding, and so a lot of our focus was on the ways that we had potentially shot ourselves in the foot a little bit a couple of times, um, by doing housing where it might not have made sense, and, uh, we were creating more flood problems for ourselves, and so when I read that, that was where my brain went, was circling back to, hey, as we're moving forward and have all these big, great ideas, let's make sure we're not creating the situation where, uh, suddenly he's got more water outside his house, so.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That was where my brain went with that.
Um, yeah, and we've think fostering air quality and water quality improvements, we've, the air quality part is more trees, I guess, um. Yeah, I think, I think the rest of those make sense. I didn't see anything else that was outside of it, and I think they were comprehensive enough that we need to define them, not, or redefine them, not scrap them or add too many more, but I, I'm excited to get the community's input on that. That the public input needs, that they're gonna have set up for us.
Okay.
To, to see what the concordance of all that.
Yeah, I'd agree. I'm, I'm interested in the identity piece, uh,
Yeah.
because that was back, I was reading through the survey comments, I think, and just different people's opinion about why they moved to Elkhart, or what made it special, and all of those things, and that was back when uh, we had the pop machine on the tree, and like, the number of people that brought that up, because literally, and, and again, this was back in twenty nineteen, so dating things a little bit, but like, there was, uh, there's this website, Roadside America, and whenever we're going camping somewhere, we look up like, what cool crap is around where we're gonna be, like the giant popcorn ball, uh, and, and our pop machine was on the list. Uh, it's gone now, so now we're not on the list at all. Uh, I'm not saying we need to make a popcorn ball or chain another pop machine to a tree, uh, but I would be super curious to hear what people's opinions are as far as, because we don't have a lot of historic structures, a lot, there are some, um, but, you know, you go through some of the other older towns, and there's really cool main streets with old tanks and all that business, and, and we don't benefit from that, um, but we can carve an identity out for ourselves.
That's, that's precisely what I was talking about, is what is that, and I think that's a community source thing. Yeah.
And people want a pop machine back, I think we can probably figure that out, but.
We got two of them, and only one of them works. I tried to get a diamond video today, forty minutes to work.
That one only worked, though.
Yeah, it.
Until he died.
It worked, and it was cheap, and it was great.
Exactly.
Bicycle was for hundreds of miles for this apartment, I think.
Yeah, that was, that was my total totality of my feedback on that chunk of the comp plan that we broke out, and I look forward to discussing warrants in September.
What else did we have on the list here? Were there three separates areas we wanted to talk about, or am I making that up?
That was it.
No, that was it, I'm sorry.
Housing, land use, natural resources, those three, those were okay.
And I do think that the housing piece is important, and I'm, I'm glad you thought it is worth keeping in there, because I agree with you. Uh, and I think it was during our meeting that they were discussing, you know, like, Ankeny grows so fast that sometimes they get ahead of their own plan, and so then you end up with different things zoned in a way that doesn't make sense later, and you have to try to, like, catch up and fix it, and, you know, we're functioning on a micro scale compared to Ankeny, but same thing, I would rather not make decisions now that the council twenty years from now has to figure out how to work around, because we weren't forward-thinking enough to realize, oh, that's gonna be problematic. Um, you had skipped over the part that talked about, um, pedestrian accessibility and whatnot, and, and we still haven't rectified that if you're down in the trailer port, there's not a good safe way for you to get from the trailer port over to here without walking on the highway, uh, where it's forty-five per hour speed limit, so, uh, I, there's still opportunities there that we haven't been able to come up with a good workaround for, address, and because we are small enough, you can walk across in less than fifteen minutes. Uh, it would be nice if people had the ability to do that, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think there's plenty to still work with there.
Great, great. Okay. Other comments? Nope. As, as we joked about at the, at the special meeting, is it too early to say, does this fit within the comp plan, and you tell us yes or no? Remember, you had made a big stew about making sure that this fits within, and you.
Oh, yes.
There you go. All right.
Exactly.
Very good. All right, on to number ten then, uh, code enforcement.
All the blanks, yes.
Anything we want to mention specifically? There were any comments, questions from council on this? Kay, is there anything you wanted to bring up, or Alexic Harrison, we invited him, was not able to make it to the evening, which is fine, but.
I don't have anything at this point that needs to come before you guys.
Okay.
No, if you run into questions, don't be afraid to email me, or let me know.
And if anybody, if there's any citizens or anything that have any questions, I'll allow a quick one here, um, but, you know, be sure to reach out and, and as well, so.
The previous iteration of code enforcement, those were included as attached documents to the council agenda. So there was an Excel sheet that listed what was the address and what the code violation was, and what the remedy was. Are we gonna man-slate that, or?
That's something at this time I've opted to keep out of the agendas for this time, although we're in the initial phases of it, that may be included at some point in, in the, in the future, but at this time, it will not be included as packets.
Is there a specific triggering event that will cause that to be included, or? Well, if it's gonna be included at some point, why not just start now?
Under my direction, it's been, we've not included it, no rea, no reason, nothing.
Nothing you can request it if you'd like.
Yeah.
So I think, in the spirit, in my opinion, in the spirit of we live in a small town, people want to live in a small town, we keep talking about it. We'd like people to have the opportunity to address the issues before maybe everybody in town knows about them immediately. There's a public record of it.
Yeah, I was like, more or less, why does it give us a flavor of how this guy's looking, this stuff?
Yeah, we, we have the flavor, we, we see it, it's more than charitable if you see it, so, that's fine, but it, as of right now, we've kind of taken a, if you want to see it, let us know, otherwise we're trying to keep it between the city and the property owners, as, as it kind of gets up and rolling, so that we can learn as we go and make adjustments as well, but it's available, any right here, that's publicly available information, so.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't had anybody reach out to me since the last meeting, so.
Just in case, between now and the end of the month, or on, uh, Labor Day, I have some stuff with that van I have sitting out front, and I put a, so I'm out of code, uh, because I've got something sitting in the yard. That will only be gone within two weeks, even that big van, it's going to my place in Missouri, so.
Okay.
Uh, just so if somebody, but I'm just kind of letting you know, that's what I'm getting out there, all's gonna go south and be stored there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
So this would be an example of if you did end up getting a violation for it, that got passed, you know what I mean?
I'd bring it back to Katie.
Right, if you wouldn't have told Katie ahead of time, and you would have come to us and then said, hey, I'm gonna have this move, we'd be like, sounds great. Like, that's, that's kind of how this process works.
Well, I appreciate you bringing that up. It's hoping today, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just didn't want everybody to think if they have, they don't, they don't need to start self-reporting everything, um, we don't need that.
Oh, no, no, but I, you're welcome.
Yes.
I've had a history, so.
I understand, I understand.
So letting you guys know.
Publicly recorded and watched meeting, I just wanted everybody to know that you don't need to self-report, and we appreciate that, though. Thank you for bringing that forward.
I, I might have.
I love the small-town vibe of it, trust me, but, yeah, thank you.
I might have a trailer at my house in the driveway.
That's kind of what I guess.
A little while, so.
Yeah, if you gotta move it, move it.
All good, we appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Oh, no, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to number eleven. I think, uh, reports of elected officials, city staff, and standing committees. Rob, as always, start with you and work our way around the whole.
Um, most notable for me is, uh, on Wednesday this week is Polk County Emergency Management Commission meeting, and, uh, they will be discussing um, how they plan to, uh, work their budget in future years with, uh, the state. with, uh, the state not being any hope, so. So I'll have more to report later.
Looking forward to it.
Parks did not meet, uh, in August, we just didn't have anything we really felt justified gathering, uh, the bingo thing is actively going on right now, so kids can get bingo cards at city hall, uh, is that going well?
I think this is such a sent you. Really?
Yeah.
We'll push it out there again.
Yeah, let's.
Yeah, I was curious about that, uh, we did schedule the next puzzle blusa, that's in September, uh, I already saw that there were some things that came out on the interwebs about that, so that was great, uh, the pickleball, net ribbon cutting ceremony is scheduled for next week.
Tuesday, yes.
Tuesday, so if you are a pickleballer and want to celebrate that, Tuesday at five thirty, that's when you do that. And Tony, we got the DNR report on the fish in the pond, so we can tell you how many fish are there, and it sounds like there's, there's good amount of fish. I think, I think that was the crux of things from parks.
Yep. Um, Jill had mentioned, uh, in an email when she said she wasn't gonna be here, um, cemetery meeting is still coming up this month, am I correct on that?
This Thursday.
This is coming Thursday, um, I don't recall if she's gonna be able to be there or not.
I know.
I know she had some, uh, commitments today, she also has commitments for Wednesday, which is the metro waste meeting, uh, I don't know if anybody, I know at last minute, anybody would possibly be able to sit in on that, if not, at the end of the world.
It's fine.
Uh, I can get that for you, I don't have off top of my head.
Back to school and.
It could correct, correct, and and I know that, so.
Yeah, that's why she's up.
My Polk County meetings are one o'clock, two o'clock, so for that, I can.
I'll see if, I'll see if I can get that information, if not, not the end of the world, just this, you know, if if somebody can't make their meeting, if we can get coverage, I'd I'd appreciate that, so, um, no, I just wanted to to touch on that, um, not a whole lot from me this go-around, uh, I know we have, uh, Katie's got it in her report, but, uh, elections are upcoming, uh, I'm up for reelection, I know Angie, you are as well. And so is the foreeager, so if there's anybody who is interested in running or putting their their information out there, um, you can get with, uh, we've got information on the city Facebook page, you can get with the Polk County Election Office as well, they can get you all the paperwork and information, I don't know if Katie, if it was you or Marissa, whoever put the post together, but all the links and all the things are there, so it's very nice, very convenient, so that, uh, again, that opened up today, so.
Filing is August twenty-fifth through September eighteen, but you just file with Polk County. Yep. So.
Good, uh, other, other than that, other thing I have, uh, as we draw nearer to harvest season and related activities and whatnot, I will tell you all now, plan on me not being here at least the next two months, and if I can make it, I will surprise you, but it'll be a last minute, hey, text message, I'm here, I'm coming, or email, or something like that, or I might just show up, so there's that, uh, because I won't know literally till I know and I am able to go on, so, uh, but prior commitments lie there, so that's all I have. It is for you.
What is?
It is not my night.
I have another due.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, just a couple of brief things, we met with the gas station developer, uh, was that two weeks ago? And they expect a full update and construction plan ready by the end of August. We'll see, um, that's when that should be settled either way, honestly, and then other plans from there if they need to, um. Actually, there was one other thing, it was, I was gonna go, oh, we're meeting with the City of Ankeny, uh, on Thursday, myself, Katie, and are you coming? Come by, Mike, uh, we'll be meeting with the city manager, the interim city manager for Ankeny, uh, one of their city managers, then a fire chief, correct?
Yes.
Uh, to discuss the rising costs of the fire coverage, and then agreements that in the past they have said they're not interested in making with us, uh, to to set up boundaries and things like that, we're gonna discuss that. Uh, I had a discussion with the superintendent of the school, actually, last night, again, uh, about some of that stuff, but also when you see, I got some clarification, when you see annexations from Ankeny coming up this direction, if they are in the North Polk schools, those residents pay the same amount to the school district as a resident that lives in any of the other cities would pay to the district, so there's a misconception, and it's it's district-wide, it's community-wide, there's a misconception that if somebody has an Ankeny address, but their kids go to North Polk schools, they somehow pay less or contribute less to the school system, that is not true. They are, that the tax levy is the exact same for them as it would be anybody else, uh, because it doesn't go by city boundaries, it goes by school district boundaries, so just to clear that up, I had a couple text messages on that after the big annexation last month, a couple weeks ago, um, and they maintain, they maintain their desire to bring the school closer to El Card as soon as district size allows and and land ownership allow, or landowners allow, uh, for annexation, and then obviously, there's annexation conversations took place again this month, uh, out to the west, those seem pretty favorable, this time we're putting together some tax paperwork, it was not my conversation, it was theirs, so, and I said for more details on that, um, yeah, covered the gas station thing, and then, uh, I can confirm there are fish, we went fishing the other night, and there was a total of seven fish caught, so we're getting there, this is the one spot that doesn't have the really tall weeds, though, because it's really hard to catch them in the spots where there's a lot of weeds, that was my comment about fishing.
Noted.
Still wish I had an aerator on.
Yeah, that's, that's a future thought, um, the more it gets used, hopefully, the fishing here kind of helps with a little bit of that, because it gets grass and weeds with that, but at some point, yeah, it might not be a bad idea to flip the grains down the road a couple years, there, it shouldn't get the water moving, get the fish pulled out, but.
Probably has my problem issue with the mosquitoes, I would help too.
Yeah, sure, shit, that's all I had.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, who normally sits here, he is present, uh, he had submitted a report as well, I'll go ahead and just paraphrase what he'd sent council, you all have it, he emailed to you guys as well, but just paraphrasing for those here, and who may watch back, um, talking about Prairie Point Park, as far as this general upkeep and maintenance over there, um, and one of the hot button concerns has been the the playground specifically, he had mentioned, and Katie and I talked about this before the meeting, I know Public Works has been working as far as handpicking a lot of the weeds and getting that stuff out of the, out of the playground there itself, um, part of the reason that it's gotten so weedy is one, the time that they have available between all the mowing and the additional extra things going on, um, but there is a tile, I guess, that needs to be repaired, um, I can't remember if we discussed this last month or not, um, but there's a tile that needs to be repaired, uh, or that Ron went, uh, to add, excuse me, underneath the playground there, to help alleviate, get some of the drainage out of there, which would then help with weeds and then all that good stuff, and we don't want to just pour mulch over it and then have to dig it up, and then you've spent more money, all that stuff, so, um, again, just paraphrasing here, conversations about potentially a third full-time public works guy in the somewhat-ish near future, maybe not next fiscal year, maybe, we don't know yet, uh, just talking with Campbell about that, he and I, um, but looking forward for a succession plan, um, you know, Ron and Rick aren't planning on retiring anytime soon, but having somebody to get on board, get on staff, get caught up with how we do things, uh, in addition to Tom Thorpe, who does all our water testing and helps with the treatment plant, et cetera, et cetera, um, he's looking at retirement here, some, you know, in the distant future, in the near distant future, so, um, reinvesting what we currently pay to him every month, or what he does, reinvesting that into our, one of our own full-time works employees, uh, in addition to other duties as as well, so, um, and then, uh, the desire for, uh, with the, I'm not going to say the four-letter word that starts with S and is generally around in the colder winter months, but the need for operators to assist with removing that from the roadways, so perhaps we look at additional, um, putting a post out for potential part-time, additional part-time assistance with that, uh, plow operators and whatnot, so, uh, that you can get with Campbell, get with, get with Ron, see what the desire, see what the need is there, uh, what they think we need, how many of it, so.
Will it be a surprise to them what they're removing, or will you use the word?
I was surprised, I I will use the word when I see it, how about that?
It's snow, snows. It's just, there's always somebody, uh, that was all that Mr. Campbell had this go-around, I'm done talking.
For now. It's awesome.
All right, um, there's been a lot of activity with the water treatment plant recently over the last couple weeks, um, they are actively trying to troubleshoot some issues, um, we have seen ninety-five to ninety-seven percent of ammonia removal, which is amazing, um, so that's a positive, and I will read, um, just some quick updates of what's been happening over there, so, uh, the demolition of the existing plant is finished, um, the new water treatment plant has been producing finished water to distribution for about ninety-eight days thus far, um, and automatic systems was on site this morning, they're trying to help the guys figure out what's going on with, they're having several alarms with the pumps and things like that, um, but they are going to call a conference meeting together, hopefully this week, with Allied Systems, West Tech, all of the entities, to see if they can come together and figure out how to get rid of some of the kings in the system.
Have all of these contractors, or have all of the, obviously, contractors for generalization, have they been easy to work with as far as getting them on the phone, getting them in here, helping out, solving troubleshoot, has there been any problems with that, or?
Um, I think automatic systems, they've had no problems, you know, I shouldn't say they've had issues with any of them, but I think they do have other projects going on too, um, so just trying to get them on the same schedule to meet together has been a challenge a little bit, um, but we are aware that, you know, we're coming down to the wire, and we need to figure this out.
Sure.
Uh, and just trying to think if anything, uh, yeah, the guys have been monitoring it on the daily, um, so just trying to kind of manage their time and get other projects done at the same time has been a little challenging this summer, alongside them take, using, trying to use their vacation time up, so, um, that is an update on the water treatment plant, um, I don't know if you saw my, the activity that happened at the lift station, we had some unfortunate storm damage, uh, to the air conditioner and the the transducer, and, uh, that was repaired recently, um, and so we have filed a claim with our insurance, uh, to remove that cost, uh, due to the natural cause that, that, um, caused it.
Suspected lightning strike.
Yes, lightning strike from a couple weeks ago, um, as Brad mentioned, we are, um, meeting with Ankeny this week to hopefully have some conversations about both of our futures, and, um, we had a landowner come to city hall a few weeks ago with interest in annexing some of his parcels into our city limits, so working on some information and details to get to him, um, for this fall, so that they can, that we can move forward with the process, um, the security cameras at Prairie Point are all set up, um, very excited to have those in place, and we have the software all set up at city hall and everything, um, we just had another, uh, meeting for our software implementation today, that is going well, um, we're excited to get that in the place and use all the new features that come along with it, uh, but it will be a busy time this fall, also for staff at city hall with all the the changes, so, um, that's a rundown of an update, if you have any questions. I don't need.
Uh, just to mention on the Prairie Point Parks, we we teased, we teased it with the the fish counts and everything, I'll I'll throw those out really quick, um, from from the DNR, uh, just reading off the list here, largemouth bass, 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 wow, don't, do I have another one of these in my bag, like, I need, I need, I need more caffeine, yes, might be needed, largemouth bass, approximately twenty, uh, length range of ten to thirteen inches, bluegill, there's about ten, uh, three point one to six inches.
That's a shock, that's, that was pretty far, that's what they got.
I'm gonna die on it.
It's kind of what they did.
Uh, channel catfish, uh, six, uh, nine point one to ten and a half inches, and the max depth of the ponds was twelve and a half feet, so.
I'm done again.
Yep.
So I have started listening on places that you say, uh, center, as the annual financial support, and then the finance report, I'm also caring for the audit this month, we have the, in September, I need property report, which you guys, that, master seal, that's kind of what I've been doing in addition to what um, Marissa's, the audit, so. For the annual exam, I guess, she.
Yeah. Questions or comments to Deb or Katie? Mike, anything for you?
We have no report from funding and zoning this month.
Okay, beaming. Councils, uh, anything else on that, any of those? Okay, uh, on to number twelve, any other business?
I don't have any.
We had a public comment section, but I'll allow it, go ahead.
Three things haven't been brought up into there this evening, I've waited to see when it was gonna be brought up, nobody's looked at the water tower to know that it's changing colors, and it's not from the sweat of the moisture into there, so that may want to keep an eye on it, may want to keep a back, look at it in there, especially on the north side, it's kind of turning green in there, secondly, your man you hire, I brought this up before numerous times in the last few councils, have you swamped it off, why don't you be sure that he is able, or if he is not on the fire department, that way you have someone around town all the time that can go on a fire call. So technically, he'd work for the city, but if there's a fire call, he could break off and go to the fire, because there are a lot of days, there's nobody around.
Sure.
In there, Angie, when you talked about the sit, the trailer court coming back and forth, I brought it up years ago, the first time they worked on Main Street, to haul the dirt out and put it on the north side of the road, make a fifteen to twenty-foot shoulder, and then they can plow it in the wintertime and everything, just for pedestrians or whatever on the day, and it's all slumped off, so there hasn't been a lot of things brought up about connecting that, and nothing's ever been done, we just pulled a bunch of dirt out, two hundred loads out of Main Street before, and we didn't get none of it, and nobody, it is, oh, no, to them, that's a loss, that's a loss, so, so.
Sure. Thank you for revisiting our public comment section, Rob, thank you very much, any other business? Okay, on to number thirteen then, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Orger?
Hi.
Shaker?
Hi.
For us, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.